Good evening, welcome to the Hingham Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday evening, September 26, 2017. The first item on the agenda tonight is the approval of two minutes, two sets of minutes, for the board's meetings on September 5 and September 21.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September 5, 2017, and September 21, 2017 is written.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public comment on items not on the agenda? Okay, the next item on the agenda where I think many of you are here for, and that's the welcoming statement, what I'm going to ask that we do, we're going to ask Mr. Mayo to present the topic to the board. The board may have a little bit of conversation or questions for Mr. Mayo. At that point then, we will open it up for questions and comments from the public. So, Tom, if you could perhaps lead off and...
Sure.
Just by way of context, this past spring, a citizen petition was submitted for town meetings consideration that spoke to the question of a sanctuary city. And for those who were watching at that time, what you may recall was that as submitted, the warrant article was not in a format where it could be acted on by town meeting. At that time, after a lengthy and I thought very constructive conversation, the board agreed, the discussion was to follow up with interested parties to see about some sort of a response from the town. So, Tom, is that a good place for you to pick it up?
Absolutely. So, we met as a working group with the proponents of that original article, as well as myself and the Hingham Police Chief Glenn Olson. And we sat and we tried to figure out exactly what the concerns were and whether or not our original thought that the town was already doing that, quite frankly, in our current actions. And we just wanted to understand what those concerns were, and it turns out we were in fact meeting all of those goals. So, what we decided to do was to try to come up with a proclamation that would memorialize our existing practices. And if you don't mind, I'd like to read it.
Please.
And we can discuss from there. So, "The town of Hingham, as represented by its Board of Selectmen, does hereby proclaim that the town of Hingham affirms that it is a welcoming community and is committed to ensuring the safety and well-being of all residents. It respects the human rights of all and pledges to provide education, health, and other services to all residents regardless of their race, age, religion, country of origin, gender identity, sexual orientation, physical and mental abilities, and immigration status. Every Hingham resident is encouraged to seek and obtain assistance from all resources available to members of the community. This includes police assistance and protection, education, and recreational services, and other services offered by the town, as well as all other departments, commissions, and agencies. Town employees and departments do not routinely inquire into the specific immigration status of any person encountered during normal operations or when seeking benefits afforded to Hingham residents." And that's the proposed proclamation. The idea is that the Board of Selectmen would sign this proclamation memorializing our existing practices.
And then would that be provided on the town website or made?
Exactly.
What?
So, we could put it on the website, it will be, you know, on the record here in the Selectmen's office.
Karen, Paul, questions, comments?
Chief, does this in any way impact your operational tempo?
No, no, most of the stuff we're doing already is practice that we're going on for quite some time.
I spent some time with the chief, I don't know, a couple of months ago, when you all were working on this statement to ask that very same question. Tom, maybe too, you could take us through the research that we had Town Council do into the executive order and our ability to continue to comply with USC 1373.
Sure. So, this has been deemed by our Town Council to not be in conflict with the federal definitions of sanctuary cities, and as such, is not going to put us at odds with any potential grant opportunities or any of the, you know, that national discussion that's taking place now.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I mean, it says who I think we are, and how we behave, and how we live our lives, and how we build community. So, I, you know, it's a statement I endorse, and I appreciate the hard work. I think the wordsmithing of something like this is important, the meaning's important, our words are important, and, you know, I think this is an important proclamation for the Board of Selectmen.
Does ICE have a presence at the courthouse?
No.
Okay. They don't have anything further.
Okay. And, you know, I would make two comments. One, I would, the board, we received about a month ago from another group of citizens, we received a request to develop something like this, and the suggestion was that it perhaps be made available for display in public places at some point. I think over the course of the summer, as people travel, they were in other communities and saw what was taking place. And while I don't necessarily believe it's appropriate for local government to go to local businesses and ask them about displaying something, what it says to me is that there is another group of citizens who had some equal concerns and who had some interest in the town issuing some sort of a document that speaks, as you said, speaks to who we are. I would also say that, you know, it's, as we look at this, and I'm sort of reminded back at the Bearcove Park regulations, and something that Karen said back then, which is, you know, sometimes you can look at something and say, "Well, you know, I wouldn't say it that way," or "I'm really not sure about this line or this word." And I think that at a certain point, you look and you say, "I'm satisfied with the meaning of this, I'm satisfied with where it is," and my own opinion is that we're there because over the last few months, while we haven't talked about it, we've been working on it. So, I would also extend my thanks and appreciation to everybody who worked on it and everybody who was patient as we had to table this in order to complete the warrant back in the spring. So, at this point...
Well, and I, you know, and I just think that we didn't, we worked on that avenue, you all worked on that avenue, and we worked on our side as well, being, I think, responsible to the needs of the town, to understand what the legal implications of this, you know, would be or could be for the town. So, you know, I think we undertook this with sincerity across the board before we got to this point.
I think at this point, I would open it up for questions and comments, and if you would, when you're recognized, if you wouldn't mind, please going over to the podium and the microphone and introducing yourself with your name and your address. That will be very helpful, and that'll also help us for our record of the meeting. So, any? Yes, please. Deborah? Yeah?
Deborah Vos, 31 Liberty Pole Road, and I thank you for your consideration, the work on it. Although I think it's not appropriate to approach businesses, I like the idea of each department in the town displaying a copy or having it someplace that is, you know, in, it's displayed in such a way, not in the, you know, not to interfere with the town business, but it's displayed in such a way that people are assured of what's going on and of the welcome they're receiving. So, I'd like you to consider that.
Thank you. Thank you. And I recognize Deborah first because she was the one who first brought this issue to the board. Laura?
Hi, I'm Laura Marwell, 30 Summit Drive, and I guess you've been working on this for a little while, but it is just, I just learned about it yesterday with the Hingham Journal article. So, I do have a couple of questions, just for clarification. You said in the last few months, we've been working on it, and obviously, people in this room have been working hard on it, and you have, but who else has been working on it? Because it seems, it seems to me that nobody, well, that I hadn't heard about it. And so, is it a large group, does this really represent, it says who we are, is it the whole town, has the town had a chance to weigh in? So, I guess I'm kind of wondering, is this just the beginning of the public conversation, or is there a vote intended tonight, or are we going to take some time to let the community weigh in?
Yeah, I think so. The board, you know, it's, I think it's kind of like a lot of committee work where, you know, oftentimes, you have to do a little bit of work, and then when you have something that's ready for, you know, distribution and folks to react to, is when things are shared. I think this board has had a practice with, you know, whether it's a policy, or a lease, or anything else. Our recent practice, which works pretty well, is that if we unveil something in a public meeting, we do not act on it until our next public meeting, because that would afford any other interested parties to take a look at it, to review, and to comment. So, this is, again, similar to how we've done a lot of our business. This is part one.
Super. Awesome. And then let me just be sure I understood the...
And Laura, just in terms of the group, it was, you know, there were a number of citizens who shared some concerns at our meeting back in March or April. I think we talked about this for, I think it was about an hour and a half. We got some correspondence at that time. And again, because we took this on as a town, we looked and said, "What staff needs to be aware of this?" And certainly, there was a legal implication, there was a public safety implication. And again, now that, now that we are assured that, from a policy perspective, that we've addressed the public safety and the legal matters, now we're at a place to share it with the town.
Thank you. And then let me just be sure I understood what I heard. So, I was going to ask, will this have any effect or put at risk any federal funding for our schools, or our police, or the Homeland Security down at the ferry terminal, or at the harbor? I understand some of the...
Yeah, our Town Council ruled on that this week, that it will not.
Okay. And then, sorry. Does this discourage or ban town officials, or police fire anybody from cooperating with federal immigration officials in the event we ever had?
No.
Kind of an event here?
It does not.
It does not? And that's it so far. Thank you.
Okay. And so, again, you know, we're going to take some comment tonight, and is there anyone else who has a question or a comment? So, Tom, what I'm going to suggest, if we could, and again, this is a practice we followed with other documents, is we put this up on the website.
You know, Mary, this is something I know you don't want to take credit for. This is one of your major initiatives as a board member since you've been serving, and I think this is a great change in government. We've done this numerous times, numerous things. We put it up on the webpage, we provided two-week or thirty-day public period of comment, trying to mirror the federal rulemaking process, and it really gives the board a chance to see the feedback from the public, digest it, and see if perhaps they didn't see it the way the public saw it, or perhaps confirmation of that. So, I think this is, you know, a real positive step going forward.
And what I'm going to suggest, in a practice that's worked well in this office, is that as we set that up, Tom, if we could please direct comments, you know, to our office in writing, and that way, again, it doesn't preclude anybody from picking up the phone, but the benefit of comments in writing is that it gives each board member the opportunity to read the same feedback, you know, the same feedback, and that just makes our job a little bit easier. So...
And so, in terms of process, what's the timeline for comment then?
So, we have, well, our next, we have two meetings scheduled in October, Thursday, October 5, and Tuesday, October 24. The 5th feels early to me.
Because what you want to do is make sure, we haven't done this too often, although we've done it, I think, four or five times now, and what we've noticed each time, as we get better at doing things, we need a period of time on the back end.
Right.
Sometimes we get six comments, not a lot to collate together. Sometimes we get 600 comments. Then we need to spend a little bit more time putting it together so you have the data.
So, Tom, I would just suggest that, you know, perhaps tomorrow, as we put this up, if you assume that the board will take it up on our meeting on the 24th, if you could please put a date for comments to be received that allows you and the office the time that you need to package it, and then for us, the time to review it all. We do, all three of us really do, we read everything that comes to us, and sometimes that's a lot. Okay? Any, anything else? Carol?
Do you have any address that people can email to? What would that be?
It'll be on the website in the morning, Carol.
Oh, okay.
Yep, yep. I understand many of you came for this, and many of you came a few months ago, and we thank you for being patient with this. I know probably many of you in the room would have liked us to vote this tonight. It's, as I hope you can appreciate, in a community with 23,000 people, we want to make sure that we give all the voices in the town an opportunity to be heard on things. And we would rather err on the side of offering a little bit more time for public comment than to move in a hasty, in a hasty manner. So, thank you. Then the next item on the agenda is a request to extend the sidewalk closure along 51 to 55 South Street.
Excuse me. Good evening. I'm Richard Henderson, and I represent RSL Realty, the developer of the Hingham project, Hingham Lincoln Building Project. We're requesting another three months, if we could, to close the sidewalks. We are still in the process of ironing out the final language of our easement with MBTA, and I expect that will be resolved, I'm hoping, within 30 days. And the construction will become more intense at that time. So, I think three months is probably a reasonable time, and we would come back at the end of December and report to you at that time, give you a better idea of how long we would need after that to finish the building.
And, Mr. Henderson, just a couple of questions. So, do you foresee the potential that the sidewalk could be closed past January 2, which is what you're requesting?
I would think so. I should say Matt Falconeri, the building contractor, general contractor, is with me. You would need well beyond January to do the whole project, correct?
No.
If you wouldn't mind coming to the microphone, thank you.
Matt Falconeri, Falconeri, Mr. Henderson.
Welcome.
So, barring any unforeseen incidences with weather, things of that nature, I don't see any issue progressing through this fall and winter after we get the building permit and being ready to open those sidewalks.
And I know that, you know, you're working on these issues with the MBTA, which you, which are expected to come to conclusion within the next 30 days. Your letter also said pending a building permit. It's my understanding that prior to getting a building permit, you have to appear before a couple of our permitting boards, is that correct?
Well, we have zoning and special site line approval already, and special permit approval.
Okay.
And the historic commission approval. However, there are minor changes that have come to pass since we've been dealing with the MBTA and with the Selectmen with respect to the north side of the building. So, once we get all licenses and all easements, we'll have to bring those minor changes back. They aren't significant. In fact, some of them, this is all hearsay because I wasn't here in June, came from suggestions from this board about two doors instead of three doors.
Sure.
More greenery instead of more brickwork. And we've done all that, and those plans have been submitted, both Susan has a copy with a license agreement that you'll be addressing soon, and the MBTA has those revised plans. But once they approve them, we will have to come back and discuss those with the three agents we've already been permitted by.
So, if I can, and Susan, maybe you could just come to the table and join us, because I think we may ask a few questions, and you've got the benefit of the microphone. Given what has to take place in those minor changes, when do you expect that a building permit would be issued? Is that 30 days from now, 60 days from now?
So, everything has been submitted through the proper channels, through the building department. So, in regards to the actual building department's work, and reviewing of the plans, and technical aspects, Michael Clancy, I checked with him last Friday, he said he has opened the file and going through it, and does not see anything outstanding.
But...
So, he's waiting for sign-offs regarding the MBTA stuff and things that are...
But that is, of course, key, though. The building permit can't issue until the MBTA issues their permit.
And is there, is there anything else that is required in order for the building permit to be issued?
Right. My understanding is that Planning Board, Zoning Board, and Historical Commission have not signed off yet, and part of that's because of the MBTA, and part of that's because the plan's been revised. I understand through staff, and I apologize, I'm Susan Murphy, Special Counsel for Real Estate and Land use. I understand, from talking to the staff, that they had an informal meeting with Steve Myers, who's the architect, and explained to him that he needed to submit a request, and it's not going to be a lengthy review, it's going to be quick because they're minor changes, but I checked with all of the staff today, and they haven't received any of those requests. So, those sign-offs, it's all going to depend on how they line up, but they all need to happen.
I'd be happy to take what I submit to the MBTA, and the same plan is in our license agreement, and submit it to the three boards and make the request now.
Sure. And I guess where I'm sort of going here is that, is that, you know, and we appreciate that, you know, you're coming back, and when we allowed the sidewalk to be closed, you know, we only allowed it until the beginning of October because we said, "Hey, we want a point to check in," and we know that you're very cognizant and very considerate of our downtown merchants, and knowing that the fourth quarter is their, you know, most busy season and things, I guess my question is, in the period between now and until the building permit is issued, is there an opportunity to, in some way, relocate the fence so that the sidewalks could be opened up? Because if I understand it, and please correct me if I'm wrong, right now, the sidewalk doesn't need to be closed based on what's going on at the site?
Well, it does. It's all construction debris and storage, not debris, but storage of rebar and all sorts of stuff.
That's on the sidewalks right now?
Yeah. The fence comes to the curb.
Yeah.
And immediately inside of that, before we get to the foundation, is...
Supplies and how difficult would it be to relocate those? I'm not trying to make your job tougher, but what, we are all very, very conscious of our downtown and our merchants, and wondering if there might be an opportunity to open up those sidewalks during the period of time when these permitting issues are, you know, going through the necessary, you know, getting resolved.
Well, my only concern is safety. I have my office in glasses, right next to a project that's been fenced in for a year and a half, and the reason the fence was outside the sidewalks, and you didn't want people near the construction site, and this is a hole in the ground, you know?
Well, it's not really a hole in the ground, not at this point.
Well, it's still a foundation, isn't it?
It's a foundation. We do have two...
It's a foundation that's been filled.
We do have two holes. We're waiting on Aquarian as well. But I think that it would probably take some time to prep it, and, you know, my goal certainly is to get a building permit sometime soon. I'm obviously relying on forces outside of my control.
Well, and that's where I'm sort of going with it is...
So, if we put efforts and do this, and it takes a week or two to do that, then they're only open for a week or two, and then we get a permit.
Well, and I guess that's why I'm asking, because, you know, as I think about it, the MBTA process, I think what I'm hearing you say is 30 days, and then some of the other permitting boards here in the town. I'm wondering if that window, until you get a building permit, is substantial enough that it's worth considering this? Because again, you know, if this were the first quarter of the year, I'm just, as I said, very sensitive to the downtown businesses.
Again, you know, we're expecting to hear from Aquarian any day, and if they say we can tap, then, you know, that's going to just muck up the whole area, and that's going to put that on hold if all of a sudden we do all the prep for the sidewalk.
Well, the bottom line is that until you get the sign-off from the T, and Historic and the ZBA on your minor modifications, there's going to be no permit that's issued. So, once those sign-offs come, and you can't say when, that will trigger the review period for the building permit application, right?
No, he's actually, that's what I was...
The fact that he's already started it is a courtesy, but what I'm saying to you is that it's the approval of the T and these minor modifications that will tee up the building permit application formally. And my question to you is, in contrast to your building in Cohasset Village, this area is surrounded by businesses who, in fact, rely on that sidewalk, and it's been effectively blocked for weeks with a site that's sitting dormant. So, is it really that big a deal for you to pull off your stock inside your site and pull those sidewalks back so that the merchants can have the benefit of that free flow of pedestrian traffic? Seriously?
It's not that I, it's a liability that I, is all that I'm concerned about. There are risers, concrete risers in there. We'll do our best.
You're telling me you can't pull that fence back?
No, it's not the fence. The fence is the easy part.
Okay.
Really.
I think what the board is grappling with is that, you know, your enthusiasm a week or two is nice, and I know the residents, the businesses would be really excited if you could actually get back to work and finish the project, but I think the reality that we're seeing is that you're probably going to be out of work for a month or more. I would recommend and suggest that you immediately go to all our permitting boards with those modifications and not wait for the T.
We're not going to, we'll do that immediately.
Okay. Oh, we're not going to wait, all right. Because, you know, as you found out, and we've tried to help you, we can't with the T. There's only so far we can go, so you're on your own here, and our council's telling us it's going to take you about a month, if not longer, to do that. So, in our idea.
Then we're in in November.
It's not like we don't have experience dealing with the MBTA on a variety of issues, and so we know how their response patterns are. And, you know, I think a month is very optimistic.
Well, that being said, then we can prep it. It's not an issue to move it.
Good.
It's easy.
Good.
We appreciate that there's been a really good partnership in, you know, you have a tough job to do because you have a site, you have a very, a very small site, and there's a lot of activity around it. And I appreciate that you've gone out of your way to keep the local businesses notified. I know that when, you know, you came in and we opened this, we did the opening only until October, we're really not trying to do that to be difficult.
I understand that.
We're all trying to, you know, in this partnership, we all have to kind of be mindful of different places, and if there's an opportunity to do that, and, you know, we, I think we want to make sure as well that our permitting boards have the ability to take this up when, you know, when they can. I think if there's anything that we can do with respect to the MBTA to, you know, I think, I want to make sure we're doing what we can...
Yeah.
...to make the, to make the MBTA and the permitting issues move as quickly as possible. And so, you know, for Ted, and for Tom, and for Susan, if there are things we can do to help their process move along, let's please do that.
I think we have a vote for you to that end.
Yep. So, not knowing where the board was going to go, you could, I had prepared some language earlier, but again, I wasn't sure where the vote was, where the discussion was going to go. So, I would suggest that you simply make your vote to open this, to close the sidewalk conditional to the issuance of the building permit, and...
In other words, when the building permit is issued for the project...
The sidewalk closes.
The sidewalk permit would be issued. He doesn't need it before then.
Right.
And all the other permitting issues, the MBTA and all the other boards, come before the building permit's the last issue.
So...
And that's under your direction ultimately, because the building commissioner works with the board's side.
So, your sidewalk closure extension that you were going to vote tonight would simply be held off until your, until the building permit date is issued?
So, if I were to put myself in Mr. Falconeri's shoes, what, you know...
He can't work now.
I understand that.
But he could as soon as a building permit would be issued, and then he could immediately access the sidewalk at the same time.
Put the fence back up.
And, so, I think what we'd be asking him to do is use his best efforts to, you know, safely reopen these sidewalks, I think. So, our agreement with you to close the sidewalks would end tonight, if this is what I'm hearing.
Correct.
But I think you'd need some time to, to move stuff back safely, to move the fence back safely, to redeploy onsite the materials that you have.
Yeah, grading, making it safe.
Is there a way to have, like, I don't know, is there a way to have Mike go down and kind of take a look at what he's talking about? I, I mean, I'm not...
Well, I think the question is whether you wanna move the fences back or not.
Yeah, I do want to...
To allow the access. So if you wanna do that, then you gotta give him time to move the fences back.
Right.
And remove whatever's in that, in that way.
And then make it safe. I mean, still, it's, it's not flat. It's not like you're walking across this maple floor here. It's...
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm...
And there's rebar pins, I mean, there's all sorts of stuff there that we're gonna have to, to be careful of.
Do you have a timeframe for how long it would take you to do that?
A week.
If I, um... Their current permit that you voted originally expires October 5th.
Okay.
So right now, their permit allows them to keep the sidewalks closed through October 5th.
Yep.
So if the board takes no action, on October 6th, the public has the right to use that way and it has to be cleared.
Okay.
Would that be set?
And if you wanted to, you could take a motion...
Right.
Okay.
That's right, Ted.
Thank you. And then, and then...
Take a motion to grant a sidewalk closure concurrent with the...
Effective.
Effective of the building permit.
So in the meantime, if utility, you know, utilities don't fall under the vertical building permit, Aquarian water, so I'm coming back in front of you if we wanna trench through there each time? You know, we're still trying to get stuff done that's not gonna, that's gonna allow us to keep getting something done.
Sure. How, how would...
You're not, you're not gonna, you need a street opening permit for Aquarian, it's just the sidewalk.
We already have, we already have all our road openings permitted.
I would think that that would include the sidewalk. For the purposes of needing to access...
Closing the sidewalk for the trench.
Yeah, for the day or two, for the day or two that that's gonna happen.
Yeah, exactly.
And we don't issue...
There'd be like point target days that we're just gonna get in there.
So in other words, if, if Mr. Falconeri can secure the utility service, that work can go ahead while we're awaiting the building permit. And if the sidewalk needs to be closed during that period, the portion of the sidewalk closed for that period of time...
Right.
He's already been granted that.
Perfect. So we can work that into the motion and then, and then he can work with our office to coordinate those days, what those days need to be.
What's the, okay. Could I, I, I just, um...
We just provided you with a motion.
Okay. I would also just, um... Through what date?
The building permit.
Yeah, through...
Whatever date, the board.
As of the date of the issuance of the building permit.
I know, this is the one, this is the question I have. Is there anything else that, that either of you wanted to add?
To the board.
Okay.
To the board. Yeah, the end date.
I did have a, I did have a couple of questions, or thoughts. One was, I was wondering, and maybe you're already doing this, I was wondering if you are providing any sort of update to the Downtown Association?
I attend their meetings.
Okay, all right. So they're in the loop on, on all of this and so...
Then Barkley directly and then rely on her to distribute it to her members or whatever.
Okay, okay. Cause, you know, as Paul and Mary said, and as we talked about the last time, I think, you know, part of what we learned earlier this year is communication's the key.
I agree.
And everybody, everybody understands how frustrating the T can be, so I'm, I'm sure they're sympathetic to that. But just understanding that that's kind of the holdup in the process, I think, is important. And then, this might muck things up further, but what about Christmas in the square? What do we, what, so we would, eventually the sidewalk's gonna get closed again in the, like, let's say in 30 days. So then, Christmas in the square is just gonna have to take account of that obstacle, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Originally, we had hoped that the work would be done and the fence would be down before then, but...
Right.
I'm just gonna...
I was just thinking, you know, Christmas in the square has gone on regardless of what was down there. Whether the sidewalk and that particular area was blocked off, that really wouldn't matter because we have Main Street and the other street blocked off, so it's an open area.
Okay. With the streets being open, you know...
And then, and then the sidewalk closing's safe, the site's safe because the...
Yeah, it's always true that if it really exists right now, it will not affect Christmas in the square.
Okay, okay. Okay, and so just so I understand it, cause I got a little lost in all this and I'm not as well versed as Paul and Mary, you, you went initially to planning, zoning, and historical and secured approvals with respect to your original design. Is that right? And then you, and then you go to the MBTA and the MBTA says...
No, we actually came here.
Okay.
That started in June with the north side of the building, there were some suggestions on how it would be more attractive in the eyes of this board. So Steve Myers, the architect, made those changes.
Okay.
And we had already submitted material to the MBTA twice, so we resubmitted again.
Yeah.
We've also submitted the revised plans to Susan to draft an agreement to fulfill the other promises or commitments that were made in June. So I think what happened was that it was being exchanged between the MBTA and Susan and I, but I did not send it to Mary or to Emily Wentworth or to Andrea, so that probably should've been done. But I didn't think the, I personally didn't think the changes are that significant and I wasn't involved in that, that meeting. But as it stands now, they would like the opportunity to decide whether they can be approved by administrative review, by simply reviewing them, or whether they want a hearing.
Yep.
So I will initiate that process immediately.
Okay. Cause I, my concern, like, as we've already discussed, is those boards have their regular hearing schedule too, and I'd hate that to slow you down. So I think you're smart to get it in front of those, those boards as, as soon as you can. Okay, so, you know, I guess, my, my only other concern is if, if you get down there and you're doing this and you, you really don't think it's gonna work, I think I'd appreciate it if you'd come back and we'll talk about it again, right? If you get down there and there's, there's too many...
So what's the, yeah, what's my mechanism to do that? Go, go upstairs?
Yeah, to get on the agenda, yeah.
We have, and we have a meeting next Thursday, October 5th.
Oh.
And so...
Next Thursday?
Next Thursday.
Okay, so one thing I'm standing here thinking is that we had HMLP, we had to reroute all the underground power there, just the way that the power's laid in town. There's no three-phase power. We had to move it from all the way diagonally across the corner. So we've successfully done all that, but we had to put a new manhole box directly in the sidewalk. So it's, it's a massive basin, but that's where our temporary power is feeding the job site and it's, it's hardwired in. I mean, it's...
Is that gonna be a hollow sidewalk?
Pardon?
Is that gonna be a hollow sidewalk?
Hollow.
Sure. Will you be able to drive a truck over that after you're done?
Yeah. But, but the issue being is I'm gonna have to cordon off this power service with an orange barrel or something.
What I would, how about this first suggestion? Can I talk to the Building Department tomorrow?
Yeah, that's what I want.
And see if, and see if maybe Mr. Clancy or one of his staff can head down, work onsite with Mr. Falconeri and try to come up with a plan on how to do this.
So right now, you have a sidewalk closure until October 5th. And while, you know, I, I hate to ask you to come back to our next meeting, let's take that available time to give you the opportunity to understand what's entailed in all this. I think having Mr. Clancy come would be a great idea. And Tom, let's put it on our agenda for October 5th. Let's just have it on the posted agenda.
Okay, so you're not gonna take a vote tonight?
No, really, there's no need to actually, if you're gonna meet on the 5th.
I don't think we have to, and I feel like we will, we might uncover some information that could change the vote, so I'd rather not vote twice.
Yep.
And I think what I would also suggest is that, is that if we go ahead and do this, it would also be helpful during that time to get a sense from our permitting boards as to, you know, what steps have to be taken. Because I think, you know, we're, we're all assuming and we understand that there's some work to clear those sidewalks. I think in our mind, we're saying the time involved in clearing them versus the time when the sidewalks could we, could be open makes that worthwhile. If we in the next week find out some different information, you know...
Right.
I'd also suggest that you check with the light plant too, because the Building Commissioner doesn't touch the light plant stuff.
Okay.
There's a transformer...
They've been super helpful. Steve, the head engineer, can come down.
You gonna be onsite tomorrow?
I can be.
We'll coordinate with you tomorrow.
I wasn't intending on it because it's not...
We'll coordinate with you tomorrow.
No problem. I wish I was.
We all do things we don't want. And so, and the, I guess the only other thing that maybe we were gonna make part of our vote tonight, and maybe you've already addressed this, but we had talked at some point about some signage on that screening.
Yeah, that was with the Downtown Business Association. Those are going up tomorrow morning.
Fantastic. Great. Well, again, you know, I appreciate, you know, your cooperation. You were very cooperative when you were here in June. And where this is coming from is just really our, our concern for the vitality of the square. And, you know, we're, we're trying, I think, to represent the merchants and the patrons and, you know...
I understand.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
When I was a father of little kids and now I'm a father of grandchildren...
Yes.
Loved taking to construction sites to look and see what's going on. Of course, you got a fence there, so we can't see. I was just curious why you have no viewing port at all in any of that fencing, but, you know, that's your call, my man. I just think...
No, I can tell you, I, the Downtown Business Association made us put that screen up. That, that fence has been vertical and strong for two years, too long, we know that. But it, week after we put the screening up, it blew over. So it's just acting as a sale. It's a nuisance to me, but, yeah, we put that up for them.
I'd echo Karen's appreciation for your cooperation. And, you know, I also know that that foundation work, that all went very, very smoothly.
It was exceptionally smooth. I'm very pleased.
And, you know, our hats, our hats off to you because I think we all know that, that foundation piece is where, you know, there could've been some, some unexpected surprises and...
There were plenty.
Well, you know, they, you're very good because it didn't show. And, and I think people are very excited about what's happening. And, and we also appreciate that you're taking the necessary steps to go through all our permitting boards. That's, you know, super important and we appreciate that you are not moving, that you are, you are adhering to the requirements of the Building Department and for the permit. And so, so we'll see you next week.
Okay.
Thanks again.
Well, that is an expectation of everybody who built in this town.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Susan, so you're at the table. Our next agenda item is a discussion of the amendment to the ground lease with Habitat for Humanity and the regulatory agreement related to...
Are we supposed to be talking about the tunnel cap agreement? Richard?
Oh, Susan, I beg your pardon.
The next thing on the agenda is that draft agreement. Do you wanna stay for that?
Oh, Susan, thank you so much. There's a part A and a part B to that agenda item and I...
Well, and this goes...
In my enthusiasm, I missed B. So Susan, could you, so the tunnel cap, right?
Would you like me to proceed?
Please.
Okay. So this goes into the category of not something the board's being asked to act upon now, but goes more to the category of what you were speaking to earlier, of having the board and the public have a preview of the discussion and the agreement. The, the tunnel cap, we're all familiar with it. The town has originally had a 10-year lease, which the town was just able to extend for another 10 years, 10 years. So it now expires in October of 2027. The lease, the rights to the town under the lease really have to do with what we'd call the hardscape, the bricks, the benches, and the landscaping. So those are the rights that the town has under the lease to use it as a kind of pedestrian amenity in the downtown. When the town originally got the lease in 2007, the town, with its own funds and a lot of volunteer work as well as staff work and some donations, created the improvements that are out there today when you walk down the tunnel cap. In connection with the Lincoln Building reconstruction, the, the design of the building provides for pedestrians that are, live in the building, so that's in the upper floors, to access from the tunnel cap rather than from south or Main Street. And so in connection with that, and that, that's what they're waiting for the easement on from the MBTA, which we were just talking about. But in connection with that, instead of just having all, mostly landscaping across the back of the building, which traditionally had always been there, they'll need to have more brick and less landscaping, more lighting in order to make that pedestrian-friendly for their residents. However, in order to do that, so they do have a construction license from the MBTA, however, that was subject to the approval of the town because of the town's control over the bricks and the landscaping, et cetera. So what we've, what we've done, and I worked with Ted and Tom on this, and then Mr. Henderson to try to reflect our understanding of what they were proposing, and the feedback Ted and Tom gave me, was to draft an agreement, which I believe the board may have gotten a draft of it. It has been provided to the MBTA at their request, however, they were told it was subject to review and approval of the Board of Selectmen, so it's not set in stone in any way. And what it does is, it covers three, three main categories of, of work for them. The first is a license to allow them to modify the tunnel cap, and we can talk about those modifications. An agreement between the town and RSL Realty and their successors that they will provide maintenance. In particular, the most important one is the removal of snow and ice for their, because right now, it's just a secondary access for all of the buildings back there. So there is not a need, so there, it's not a priority. If there's a big snowstorm and DPW needs to go out and clear sidewalks for children to get to school, that would happen before the tunnel cap. But in this case, that's the only way these people who live there are gonna be able to get out of the building. So under the MBTA lease, it's the town's responsibility to keep that clear of snow and ice. In this case, they're agreeing to take on that maintenance obligation. And in addition, it includes an indemnification to the town so that in case anything that happens related to their use for primary access and is not the fault of the town, they're indemnifying the town in connection. So those are the three major things that the document does. There are also plans that have been provided to the Board of Selectmen conceptually. There was actually some more detail that we actually got late at around 5 o'clock today, but it had been included in your packet. And it includes that they're gonna add more lighting, so, but the light fixtures have to match the light fixtures that are already out there. They are going to add more brick because the brick has to be brought to the two doors and the accessibility ramp. But I was able to get from the town engineer the spec for the same brick that's out there today so that the brick will be required to match, you won't have a mismatch. And then they will reinstall landscaping in the areas where they're not providing the access. So those are the primary modifications that they wish to make to the tunnel cap finishes that are already there. So, you know, that's, I don't know if the board has any questions at this point about, for them, about their plans, about the agreement. But, you know, it, we're still kinda making sure that the MBTA doesn't have any questions about it before we put it into any type of final form. There's also a provision in here for an escrow, kind of like a security deposit to make sure that the work gets done or gets done appropriately so that the town doesn't have to go out of pocket to correct any of the work. And they would get that money back after they complete the work. So it's not, it's just a temporary deposit to secure the work.
Paul or Karen, do you have any questions for Susan about the agreement or the process?
Is it necessary to articulate what the landscaping will consist of? I know we've done that on Sashua Baptist Church.
Yep. There's a requirement that they provide a more detailed plan to the board. And you can delegate review of that to, you can review it yourselves, you can delegate the review of that, but there is a requirement that they provide a more detailed plan. of that, but there is a requirement that they provide a more detailed plan.
And are the lighting fixtures still being manufactured, or are we getting a, are we running into a similar scenario that we've experienced elsewhere?
I believe the match of the lighting was also something the planning board had asked for, so I don't know if you've had a chance to spec the light fixtures for the tunnel cap yet?
I don't know if we can answer that. Steve Myers, maybe the architect.
Okay.
They really went to planning board.
Yeah, yeah, and maybe Steve Myers may know better.
Yeah, he didn't actually give cost of the...
Right. I, I can't, we can't answer specifically.
Just so that I'm crystal clear, the snow removal will be from the sidewalk of Main Street to the sidewalk of Central Street.
Yes.
And will it be removed from the site, or are you going to be piling it up against the side, the walls of the buildings on either side? Where do you, where does that...
Well, there is, there are, there are emergency backdoors for all the other businesses. So, you know, I think that most of the businesses right now may clear those backdoors themselves because of, you know, if, if the, if the town hasn't had the chance to get to it yet. But I would say, you know, it's not, it's not called out in the agreement, but if you want something more specific, and you want to share that with Tom, we can work on the language.
Yeah, I, I might make a suggestion, Susan, and that is that if...
We don't need to vote this thing.
Right. Since we're not voting this, if we, if we haven't had a chance to review some of the details, and sometimes it's helpful to look at this after getting an overview.
Yep.
We'll, we'll forward things to Tom for Susan. I think the, I appreciate that we're trying to move ahead on this, so that when we can act on it, it's ready to go. And that's really our, our goal here, is that, is that once the MBTA, you know, once everything's, your stuff with the MBTA is all done, then, you know, we, we can take this up and move through it very quickly.
And what about the 10-year time period for our, so our lease with the MBTA runs for 10 years. So, would our agreement with RSL Realty run for 10 years and then be renewed? Like, how does that, how does this continue in perpetuity?
Well, at this point, it's, at this point, it, it keeps running. But if the town's rights to the tunnel cap, then all the town's obligations with the tunnel cap will go away as well. So, I would say that, for example, any indemnification or removal obligation of snow with the town, if the town's unable to have, you know, come to an agreement, or no longer wishes to maintain the tunnel cap, it would make this document moot.
And why does the MBTA do this on a, on a 10-year incremental basis? Just in case they have some other use for the tunnel cap that they want to, that they want to, they don't want to create any sort of almost leasehold interest in, or a fee interest-ish?
Right.
Like, it's not a 99-year lease.
Right. So, the town had one renewal term. It currently has no more renewal term. So, after the first 10 years, we were able to just, in fact, you voted, I believe, in April to renew it for the enormous price of $20 for 20, for 10 years.
Good negotiating.
I wish it was, I wish I can say it was me, but it was done in 2007. So, so, but they only gave the town one renewal term at that time. So, you know, it's going to be, somebody's tickler in 2026 to start a conversation with the MBTA about, about this.
So, we're going to be right where you are. Now, that's interesting. Okay. Well, something to look forward to.
I want to think about legislative action on that before 10 years are up. Because a legislator could change that.
Yeah, it just seems, it just seems kind of...
And take it away from the MBTA.
Any question, any other questions or comments from the public on this? Okay. So, now we can move to Winona Way.
Okay, great.
Thank you. So, this is Zero Winona Way.
Okay. Let me just switch piles quickly. Okay. Again, 2007. We're revisiting 2007. Thanks.
Thank you.
The town ground leased parcel of land known as Zero Winona Way to Habitat for Humanity under a 99-year lease in 2007. Habitat then built a house on it. They had, someone was, had been living in the house. Those people chose to move, for whatever reason, Habitat bought the house back. In the process of remarketing the house, and just, you know, trying to kind of make sure all the paperwork is in order, and also, because Emily Wentworth has been working on getting every possible affordable unit on a subsidized housing inventory, there were discussions with Habitat and DHTD and Emily Wentworth, and it was found that the affordable housing restriction that the town had used in 2007 was not up to current DHTD standards. And also, in order to have it on the subsidized housing inventory, we needed to have a regulatory agreement in place. So, there's a couple of things that the board is being asked to consider and hopefully approve, because if, if they are approved tonight, then a new buyer will move into the house by the end of the week.
Wow.
They have a buyer all ready and set to go. And so, the first one is to amend the ground lease, and that's a simple, barely two-page document. And really, all this is doing is substituting out the, any language having to do with the old affordable housing restriction for the new affordable housing restriction, and referencing the regulatory agreement. So, it's really just bringing the lease up to date, so that it matches all of the affordable housing documents and making them current. There is a document that's a notice of lease, an amendment to the notice of lease, because that was also a recorded document that referenced the old restriction, and we need to reference the new restriction. So, it's just putting the public on notice that this 99-year lease is out there, and what some of the basic terms of the lease are. And then, the last document is the regulatory agreement itself. The board has seen a number of these. There, it's pretty much in almost identical form of the other various regulatory agreements you've been asked to sign in the past year, years. And it just basically puts into place the parameters under which the property must maintain and, must be maintained as an affordable unit, what happens if someone wishes to sell the unit. It just has all the procedural requirements in there. And the town's required to be a party of that by DHTD in order for it to be on our subsidized housing inventory. So, those are the three, the three documents before you for vote, and if you do approve them tonight, I'm just not going to leave until I get them, because they need to get, hand-deliver the DHTD tomorrow for DHTD to sign, so this closing can happen this week.
Okay. Paul or Karen, do you have any questions?
So, you have no concerns about this? This brings us...
No, I, Emily Wentworth and, and I have been involved with Habitat for Humanity and DHTD since this came up sometime, I want to say, maybe even last year, or very early this year, and we worked through with them all of the language, so we're very comfortable with it.
Okay.
I want to thank you and Emily for sticking with this.
Yep. Any questions or comments from the public? Okay. And Susan, I would just say that it was, you know, not only getting the package and getting it on a timely basis for us to be able to review it, because it's pretty big, but, you know, sort of the, the executive summary that you're putting on many of these documents, as far as what is this issue and what's different, just as the non-lawyer on the board, it just is, is really, really helpful. A lot of these legal documents are written in kind of legal speak, and it's, it's really helpful to just kind of get it in English. So, thank you.
You're welcome. I've worked on that.
I agree with that.
I was going to say, I'm a, I'm a non-real estate lawyer on the board, so.
With someone like...
It's something, as a lawyer, you have to work on, putting it into English, so I'm glad it was helpful.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yes. I'll move that we approve and execute the First Amendment to Lease, First Amendment to Notice of Lease, and Regulatory Agreement Related to Zero Winona Way.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Susan, thank you. We will not start our cars or venture to the parking lot without signing the documents. It's nice to hear there's a buyer so quickly. The final item on our agenda tonight is a, is an FY19 budget discussion, and I know it seems early September, but it's getting, it's getting to be budget time, and we appreciate the Chair of the Advisory Committee being in the audience. Really, what I wanted to do is, is two things tonight. Last week, was it last week or the week before that the forecast group...
Week before you had your first forecast meeting of the year.
Okay. We had the first forecast meeting of the year, and for the benefit of the public, the Revenue Forecast Group, it consists of the Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator, Chair of the Board of Selectmen, Chair and Vice Chair of the Advisory Committee, Superintendent, School Business Manager, and the Chair and Vice Chair of the School Committee. And the purpose of the Revenue Forecast Group, Forecast Group is to really take, take a first look at the revenue picture for the town, and to see where things are. And actually, I've suggested that a forecast review be put on our agenda for the fifth. But as, as we know, and Karen and I in particular, being former advisory committee members, one of the things that happens, that's going to be happening over the next few weeks, is that we need to give budget guidance out to the department heads, as far as what sort of a budget to put together. And typically, the, you know, our team, the, the town administration team, comes to us with a recommendation. So, in some years, they say, you know, we'd like to do, ask everybody for a level services budget, or a level funded budget, or, you know, maybe both. And, you know, in order for that guidance to be rece, in order for them to, you know, provide that guidance, they need a little bit of policy direction from us on the revenue side. And it's, it's not a lot of direction, and I think, but it's, to me, it's, it's two, it's really the question around how much revenue should be assumed to be available for this year. And so, for me, it's really two questions. The first one is, does this board have any, any desire to pursue an operating budget override? I don't.
No.
No.
Okay. No override. That's question number one. Done. Question?
Got any other hard ones?
And this one, and we might not, we might, we might need to talk about this and take it up next week, but the, the second question, and, and again, part of the reason I'm doing this is that sometimes during the budget process, there's a little bit of doubt, you know? And I think there's some places where clarity, clarity going in is a really good thing. So, we do have something in our financial forecast that's called unused levy capacity. It's a complicated subject, but essentially, it's $500,000 that we would be entitled to tax, but that we haven't, because we have been using meals tax money to follow through on our commitment for tax relief through building the middle school. So, said another way, when the town of Hingham said, "We want to build the middle school," we are, instead of asking the taxpayers for $500,000, we're taking it out of meals tax revenue. And that meals tax, we may recall, when it was initially proposed by town meeting, there was a lot of discussion as to how, what that meals tax, if instituted, what it would be used for. And what I remember at that time was the town meeting was pretty clear and said, "Meals tax money for large capital projects, not to get folded into the operating budget." And the reason I bring this up, and if it's not a decision that we want to make tonight, that's fine, but every year, as operating budgets get tight, in the past few years, the question has been raised, should we consider doing away with that unused levy capacity? Personally, as I look at the pipeline of large capital projects we have on the horizon, and I look at the town meeting decisions, I would not be prepared to do that this year.
Me neither.
And...
Okay. No, I, I, you know, I, people have tried to explain this concept to me, beginning with Greg McKeon, and every time, I'm like, "Oh, yeah, yeah, I get it, I get it." I do think it is a little hard to take in sometimes, and I, I'm not prepared to, to upset the apple cart this year. I, I do think, in the case of, of this particular allocation of meals tax, that to me, it was tied to the, to the middle school tax relief, and it's not, not necessarily in perpetuity. So, I'm, again, not prepared to upset the apple cart this year, but, you know, I think it's a, I think it's worthy of ongoing discussion.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So, what that really means, you know, Tom, in terms of, of budget guidance and things, is that as, as you look at the revenue forecast, the revenue that's reflected in the revenue forecast is the revenue that we have to work with. So, as you start thinking about budgets and budget assumptions and things like that, I would, I would look at the revenue that we have. That's all that's there. So, and I think next week, it would be helpful to just, you know, the forecast, I know it is going to be shared with the Advisory Committee and the School Committee. I think it would be helpful to just kind of high-level present it to this board, along with some of the assumptions as we know it right now. You know, what do we think is going to happen with healthcare? What do we think is going to happen with state aid? And, you know, if, if, if we assume, you know, 2% on the budgets, what, what does the bottom line look like? I think that would just be, you know, a helpful bird's eye view at this point.
And when does the budget message go out?
It's scheduled to go out on October 16th.
Okay. And so, is it in between now and then that we determine whether we're asking, for instance, for level services or level funded?
That's right.
Okay. And is that something you do administratively? Okay. So, based on sort of the assumptions we, we just talked about?
So, this is the guidance I needed to have, to build the budget message.
What, what Tom will do is look at the revenues that we've determined, we think we have available to the forecast group, which we determined through consensus, and then he'll have to make an assessment, I mean, all of you are doing it at the same time, as to whether or not you can manage your next year's budget cycle with level services, or you need a reduction.
Yep.
Generally, we don't ask for increases. Whether it's level services or reduction, anything extra comes in as an extra item. I just wanted to point out, Mary, what you had mentioned about the, the meals tax and the use of that. You know, it was targeted at the middle school primarily, but it was also general tax relief. And there was a past board here that had challenged the administration on how we were going to allocate that tax relief. The use of unfunded levy capacity was, was merely our, our best way to get that to the taxpayers without the transactional costs. If you go back and look at some of the past meetings, you'll see a discussion, the treasurer came in, and we talked about actually mailing checks out. We were going to take that half a million dollars, and we're going to divide it up by every property owner and send everybody a check. And then, when we looked at that, and we saw how much that was going to eat away in the process of it, we realized that with a stroke of a pen, literally, you would be allocating it across the board to everybody. So, there's that correlation there, which is why I've said several times in the last few years, if you feel you're at a point where you need operational revenue, I'd be careful about taking that. I might, as hard as it sounds, ask for it in a different way. I ask for an override or a debt exclusion, but keep that commitment, because you've made that commitment. So, but again, that'll be part of a larger conversation when you get to those points, which are not on the horizon.
Well, and the only, and, and I completely agree with the, with the sort of more efficient delivery of across-the-board tax relief. I think what ends up happening is, unless people are listening tonight, they don't know that they're getting that tax relief.
Correct.
And we are managing budgets to, and services to produce that tax relief. But I think people don't, people don't generally know that.
I think the middle school's been open four years.
Correct.
Four years. And in each of the last four budgets, there's been a half a million dollars of tax relief. So, you know, that's two million dollars, $2 million in aggregate. And again, when, when we were looking at the middle school, one of the things we said was, to bring those borrowing costs down, we had accumulated about $2 million in meals tax revenue in the bank that was applied to the middle school. In addition, we were going to apply a half a million dollars every year. So, you know, here again, four years in, this, this year is the last year of that $2 million. So, we've used $4 million worth of meals tax to pay for the Hingham Middle School. I think our share of that was about $32 million. So, that's, you know...
Substantial.
That's, that's fairly significant, and...
It's interesting, too. You might remember the ballpark when we, when we proposed the meals tax, which, again, was not without...
$250,000, what Department of Revenue said we would earn.
Yeah.
We earned 620 in our first year. If the meals tax ever comes on the table again on a legislative level, I would highly recommend that you increase it as best you can to the maximum. It has had zero economic effect on the community in terms of restaurants. We've increased restaurants ever since that, and revenue seems to be increasing at the restaurant, at the restaurant level, if you just backwards engineer your, your amount of money. The amount of revenue generated by our restaurant community in this, in this community is astronomical. We're not putting it on their backs, but it's a tax that allows the citizens of Hingham to enjoy some return for the influx of people who don't live in Hingham, in their streets and roads into those restaurants.
Right. But, but when we did originally propose it, we, we, we did consider all those things, and it wasn't without, you know...
Absolutely.
I think a little bit of a heavy heart, because if you remember, it was being proposed right in the midst of the financial crisis, and sort of adding to people's tax obligation, no matter where or how it was, I think...
And I'm sure it will not be proposed the next time in the best of economies.
Right.
And so, you'll be faced with that same challenge again. I just, you know, so you can listen to the tape and see that, you know, the next time you get a chance of taking it, you, you want to do that.
And, and you know, now we have experience with it. I think then, there was a lot of uncertainty.
Right.
Uncertainty about whether it might affect traffic at restaurants, concerns about the economics for the restaurant owners, many of whom are local business, you know, local business... economics for the restaurant owners, many of whom are local businesses and residents.
The trend in government will continue in that vein. Every major tourist activity in the country is funded through those. The entire state of Florida is practically funded through that kind of tax. And so we've seen a shift in the '70s and '80s to user fees. Now we're seeing shifts in this century to these type activities. And so the quicker you get to it, the quicker you're going to have longer-term better finances.
Thank you. With that, the next item on the agenda is appointments. I believe we might have two.
Yep, I have one. I'd like to move that we appoint Elizabeth Dings to the Historical Commission for a three-year term ending June 30, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Before I do the nomination, I just want to do a little explanation. We had interviews last night. The three of us sat here for a couple hours and spoke to different residents in town about different committees. And one of the committee positions was the Veterans Council. And this very pleasant gentleman came in who described himself as a retired stay-at-home dad, which obviously prompted me to inquire. So it's with pleasure that I nominate Joe Gregg to the Veterans Council to fill an unexpired term ending June 30, 2019. Mr. Gregg served his country honorably for 21 years as a United States soldier, and I think he's going to bring some real energy and positivity to an already vibrant group of men and women serving as Veterans Council to Keith German's activities.
And it's with great gratitude that I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Selectmen Town Administrator reports.
I do, just to have a couple of things I wanted to announce. One is that the town of Hingham has been awarded a recycling dividends program grant in the amount of $17,600. I know Randy Sylvester and the Long Range Waste Recycling Reduction Committee, I believe, close to it, anyway, works annually on this grant. So that's great, great work by them, $17,600. And this is a nice announcement to make. Maureen Shirkus is the director of the, again, here we go with acronyms, Shrek, the South Shore Regional Emergency Communications Center. Thank you. Our dispatch center has been awarded a grant in the amount of $652,509 for FY18 as a development grant for the regional dispatch channel. So...
How will that...
What are they going to use that for?
So how will that be applied?
You know, that's our, actually, that's a grant we've been receiving on a regular basis. It's just, it's a little more competitive now that we're outside of the, you know, for the first five or six years, we were the only one. And so they had grants, but they, you know, they're all coming in our direction almost any time. Now, it's competitive. As you know, last year was the first year we actually saw savings in it in seven years. Now they're at the point where they're looking at taking on other communities. And so they're at a real point where they have to decide whether it's Waymouth or a lot of others, because Waymouth would essentially be the only one they could add in. And then they're going through that exercise very appropriately.
Terrific. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Paul?
Just because I'm not talking a lot doesn't mean I'm not busy. I'm out there, and I'm reaching out to stakeholders in the community, especially in the southern parts of town. And as we kind of gear up to go into the fall, I'm looking forward to concluding the work of the South Hingham Working Group, finally. I think we're on year four now. Judy Sneath is chair, she's doing a great job. And we're also going to start working, we're going to have our first meeting Thursday night of the 3A Task Force, so working both ends of the town, got some real talent on board. Very excited about that. Finally, before I pass over the mic, I'd like to recognize Angela Alexiades and Abigail, and thank you sincerely for the privilege of working with your husband. I've worked with him for a while now, and it's, he's both been instructive and a strong source of support for me. So best to you in your new chapter.
Karen?
I thought you weren't talking, because I was hugging the mic, but, all right, okay, I'll go with that. I guess I'd just like to say that I, too, have been working mostly these last couple weeks with Keith German, our Veterans Service Officer, on a number of veterans-related issues. And one of the things that it just reminds me of is how lucky we are to have somebody of Keith's caliber and commitment. He really provides a great degree of support for the veterans community, the Veterans Council, in terms of recognition and support for veterans. So I'm really enjoying working with him, and I think we're moving the needle on some veteran service issues in town. And then a quick shout-out, maybe you already did this while I was away, but I saw in the Hingham Journal that Taylor Forger apparently won the 50-50 raffle at the Hingham High School home opener for football, and she turned around and contributed her winnings to Hingham Youth Football to support her dad Glenn and her brother Finn. And again, you know, a couple of weeks ago, you were probably watching, and there were two high school guys who sold ice cream on the Fourth of July and donated that entire day's proceeds to benefit veterans in need. And, I don't know, it's those kinds of like feel-good, these kids are thinking about community service and support for others that I'd just like to recognize. So thanks, Forger.
Thank you.
Taylor, I mean, sorry.
So a couple things. So we all, and just for the benefit of the audience, we all have kind of liaison responsibilities. So, well, you know, any citizen or any committee can reach out to any one of us. We try to divide things up so that we can kind of maximize our access as liaison to the schools. Last night, I helped, I voted to ratify the school contract, and that was my only contribution to the effort. So the real work, the real work was the school committee and the school administration and the HEA bargaining unit and their leadership. But I did have the opportunity to spend time with both Dr. Gallo and Liza O'Reilly going through all the, you know, the specifics of it, and looking forward to continuing, you know, our partnership as we move along. I'd like to acknowledge Matt Bell, who was the Volunteer of the Year in the Elder Services. That was, he was recognized at a luncheon about a week ago. We'd like to just offer our congratulations to the Hingham Historical Society. The Heritage Museum is open, and if you haven't had a chance to go visit that, it is just wonderful. And I see our police chief in the audience. The Citizens Police Academy started its 60th class this past week, and you've got some students in there, which is terrific. You've got a lot of, you know, you've got some diversity in the room, and that's terrific. And I also did want to acknowledge that recently, the trustees of the reservation had a celebration honoring 50 years at World's End. And one of the honorees that evening was our former moderator, Tom O'Donnell, who was instrumental in that World's End property going to the trustees. And, you know, it could have gone to be developed into many different things. And Tom and others were instrumental in getting 1,800 people to volunteer to, in a very short period of time, raise, I think it was $650,000. And, you know, I tend to think of Tom O'Donnell as someone who's left just such a significant imprint on our government and our people. And I was reminded that night that his contributions also extend to the property of Hingham. And so we offer our congratulations.
Absolutely.
Finally, I have the honor of presiding over a pretty special meeting tonight. And tonight is the last night that our Town Administrator Ted Alexiades will be here in that capacity. And Ted, you've made our town better. You've made our citizens' quality of life better. You've made our staff better. You've made us as volunteers better. And the contributions are enormous, and the imprint of all of your contributions is left behind in a very well-run town that is financially stable, in active citizens, in dedicated staff. And, you know, we had night number eight last night of Talent Bank. People want to come and volunteer here, and that has everything to do with the quality of management, and that starts at the top, and that starts with you. We can't express our gratitude adequately in words. What I will say is that we will try our very best to conduct business and help lead this town in the example that you've set. So we thank you, and we offer our congratulations. So with that, we'll take a motion, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we'll see everybody on October 5th.